Dr. Cannon?
Here.
Welcome, Dr. Yeager. Dr. Nance, here. Dr. Manns?
Here.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to Agenda Item 2, which is to amend and/or adopt the agenda. From what I understand, there may be some suggestions. So I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor for that.
Madam President, I want to make a motion. I'll put that in form of a motion now. I move that we need to identify a person on this board that would be a spokesperson to the media pertaining to the Advance Ed complaint. We don't need multiple people talking to the media. That could be dangerous.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead. Mr. Pruitt, I think I would open that up for discussion at this time before we make a vote on that for amendment. Okay? So I'm gonna open the floor up for any questions or discussion on the motion that Mr. Worthy just made, which was to nominate a spokesperson to the media about the Advance Ed complaint.
Madam Chair, I just want a clarification. You're not voting with subs since you just voted on whether to amend the agenda.
Thank you.
So we discuss it if it's amended, then we discuss it, not during the...
It is amended, we discuss it at whatever point we can.
I got you.
All right.
Yes, can I say this short? I just read the rules recently, for whatever reason, and I think it says that there's only supposed to be one person talking to the media according to the rules. So do we need to change the rules?
I think, from what I've read so far, and this may be, Dr. Nance, you may be able to address this, or Dr. Myers, but one of our policies right now that is up for review, or it's in some part of that policy process, I think it does speak to the president or a designated as being the person to speak to the media, but I just couldn't exactly figure out where we were in the process. So I know that that policy, it looks like it was out for revision, if I'm not mistaken?
Well, even if it's out for revision, there's still a policy in place, so we'll check on it.
Let me speak to that. No, we aren't changing the rule because you talk about what's in the policy here, about on this board to talk to the media. Okay? I know we have that policy too, but I'm just reminding people, I have experienced this, et cetera. You don't need multiple people talking to the media. You just need to identify someone.
Okay, so at this point, it sounds like, if I'm correct, this is a motion to amend the agenda, maybe to even discuss this further?
To nominate a spokesperson.
Right, so my question was, are we amending the agenda to have a further discussion about this and then possibly nominate somebody? Or if we do, if we amend the agenda, do we have to nominate somebody?
I would think it could be discussion and clarification. I don't think that we would have to nominate someone if it's already clarified in policy, but I'm open to being corrected on that.
My motion was to identify a person to speak to the media pertaining to the Advance Ed complaint. Now, you answer a discussion, you get a discussion. So when you call for a vote, we'll see whether that's going to happen.
Okay. Sure. Okay. So I'm assuming we move forward. Dr. Means and Mr. Pruitt, is that conversation like about, is it gonna stop us from being able to vote on this particular? Can we go ahead and vote on this motion?
Our conversation that we were having?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was like specifically about like, maybe we need, because someone had asked a question about if it meant...
I apologize. I was seeking counsel on the resolution that's in front of us right now.
Oh, okay, well, someone had asked a question if like, if we, I think it was our document, if we like...
I'm sorry.
If we move the vote, if we actually vote for this motion, does that mean we can simply discuss it? Or do we have to actually nominate someone? Okay.
Just a discussion. Additional discussion here. Among other policies that may relate to this, Policy KBCA, News Releases, says in part, "The board chairperson shall be the official spokesperson for the board except as its duty is delegated to the superintendent."
And I need to put down, as I say earlier, I want to make sure this happened. You can vote for it and you're not gonna vote for it because I said everyone at this table, you know that you are spoken to media.
That's not true. Okay, well, so let's go ahead and take a vote on whether we want it on the agenda, and then when we get to that point, we'll... So if you all don't mind, I'll go ahead and wrap that conversation up. And those that are in favor of discussing nominating a spokesperson to the media about the Advance Ed complaint, if you would, amending the agenda. I'm sorry, to discuss this. Let me restate this. Those that are in favor of amending the agenda to discuss this item, if you would, show, raise your hand. Okay, and then those that are not in favor of amending the agenda? Okay, looks likely we have a vote to amend the agenda. It was five, four, and four that were not in favor. And let me just make a note here.
If I'm two-thirds vote to amend the agenda?
You need two-thirds.
Okay, I apologize for that. So if that is not carried, okay. We're still at Item 2, okay? Amend or adopt the agenda, Ms. Davis? Okay, so we got two motions on the floor. Help me out.
I'm gonna say I'm gonna get one now.
No, well, Ms. Davis made the motion that we adopt the agenda, and Mr. Davis has an amendment that he would like to make to the agenda.
Mr. Davis' motion is first. You need to carry that motion. And if it passes, you can't...
We'll, okay, we'll vote, and then...
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I don't know if there was a second to Ms. Davis's...
There wasn't a second to either.
And I don't think there was an opportunity for that motion to be heard by the full body. And equally, I don't think Mr. Davis's motion had an opportunity to be heard by the full body. So I mean, if I may, I would suggest that Ms. Davis's motion get an opportunity to receive a second, potentially? I say, okay? Red is still making such a...
I just love these steps to your positions. Okay.
Okay, I'm making a sub to a sub to a sub, or just a sub to a sub. Yeah, I have a resolution that I would like to submit for the board on the hiring for the school board of an independent council. And you've got a copy of the resolution in front of you.
And is your, to be clear, Mr. Davis, is your motion that we vote on this or that we add this to our agenda?
Yeah, and we're having a discussion on the topic, and so I'm a little bit confused in terms of vote entry procedure. You could have a discussion and then make a resolution accordingly. Am I right?
Yeah, I agree. I frankly don't understand my either that...
That's what, it was kind of weird.
The resolution could come up under four points length.
And that's what I thought. I don't know why it'd have to be an independent vote. So with that understanding of legal counsel, I would, I'm simply passing out the resolution to the members, and in the course of our discussion on the topic, then I would like to bring it forward during that discussion if I see that that would be a step forward in the right direction.
So you can rescind your amendment too?
Yes. So we're doing the discussion. But with the stipulation of council, that we can take a vote at that time following our discussion.
Yeah, to clarify, that means that during that discussion of topic number one, if your attorney's making a motion to adopt this resolution, it's okay, you can do that. It's not gonna make a resolution, everyone's spokesperson. You can do that. It's all out of the intention of the board.
Okay, and so if I am correct in my thinking, that brings us back then to the original motion, which was that we, Ms. Davis made that we adopt the agenda. Mr. Worthy seconded that motion. I don't know that there's any more further discussion, but I will ask for the record. Those in favor of adopting the agenda, if you would show. Okay? All right. We are now at Item 3 with our personnel recommendations. Are there any additional context or...
No, ma'am, I would just, I guess there is one piece of context I would want to provide to the board. Under Policy BH, which is the Board Code of Ethics, I would just draw your attention to Domain Number 6, Number 2, where it reads, and I quote, "Support the employment of persons best qualified to serve as employees of the school system." It goes on to say, "Insist on regular and partial evaluations of school system staff." I would just inform the board and community that we went through a fair and impartial interview process for all the candidates that are for you this evening. These are the best candidates that we believe should work in our system to advance our strategic plan.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor? Can we get a motion regarding the personnel? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Means. Is there a motion?
Oh, good hands. I recommend all of these nominees for higher.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
I'll move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for personnel matters.
Say it.
Okay, any questions, general questions around this motion? Okay, all in favor of accepting the personnel recommendations, if you would show by raising your hands? All right, so we will move on to Item 4, which is board discussion of our Advance Ed complaint. Go ahead and open the floor. Yeah, any questions, any questions of clarity? Any thoughts? This would be the time to discuss those things now. Mr. Davis?
Now, if you're looking through a response, I mean, my understanding, and I don't know, because there has been some stuff shared on this, that Dr. Means was preparing a response to the complaint, if I understand correctly, in that you were doing it with your staff, your central staff, and legal counsel. Is Mike your legal counsel?
Madam Chair, board members, community members, I don't believe that this is an appropriate time for me to respond to the situation. It's my understanding that the purpose of this Agenda Item is for the board to talk among yourselves around what your next steps will be as it pertains to complaints.
Can I ask you a question?
No.
And I sent you all the, you know, when I started representing, I took over from my senior partner back at the end of 2012, 2013. I hadn't been here long when I was asked the question, who do you represent, board or the superintendent? I was taken quite back. Probably everybody understood it neither. So I took out the rule 1013 of the State Board and I was explaining organizational flag. It didn't satisfy people very much. I explained it numerous times again since then, but it's still the answer. I don't represent the superintendent. I don't represent any individual or member. I represent our county school district. Now, I'll just go ahead and jump forward. This resolution, that's exactly what we came here to nominate. Because, you know, you get, this is a political issue, and I try to stay as far away from politics as possible. I'm not on any social media, I don't know the politics. I feel like it helps me be informed. The perceptions still aren't working. I get asked legal questions around political matter, and people don't like the answer, assuming it's politically motivated. Sometimes people, they like the answer, assuming it's politically motivated. Neither is true. But I understand the perceptions, and I fully agree that you think you have a lawyer who represents our county school district. I'm the board, I'm the superintendent. Our county school district, which is why Greg's resolution says he should have to be writing about that. But handle this matter separately. Let us go back to doing the work of representing the school district legally and others.
Thank you, Mike. Because that does clarify a lot to me. So I would, I'd like to go ahead, if I could, give a mic.
Mr. Worthy?
Yes, I sent out an email. Give the microphone to one. I sent out an email, I think it was last week, in terms of attorneys representing this board. And Dr. Means, you've been after it, Your Biographer. I know when I was president, I signed a statement, "Amelie, we pay GSBA $12,000 to $14,000 a year." And when situations come up with this board with risk management at GSBA, and I believe Field Hartley is in charge of that. And of course, if he doesn't take the case, he would appoint a board, I mean, an attorney to take the case. Those of you that are familiar with education, we have different associations like GAE, that's Georgia Association of Educators, PAGE. And one of the key reasons that educators would join those associations because of the fact that if something comes up legally, they would appoint an attorney to handle that for them. Now, having said that, and keep talking about appointing an attorney for this board, if you're talking about using your own money, that's fine. I am not on hold for an attorney to represent this board when we pay GSBA $12,000 to $14,000 a year to do exactly what I just said.
Mr. Worthy, we actually checked on that, and this does not trigger any GSBA coverage. This is really eliminated against, as somebody else offered to bring up a discussion about hiring. And there are certain circumstances where individuals, staff, or elected officials might be afforded their own personal representation for 2933 or 5941. But that's going to be for independent and civil criminal or quasi criminal action. This doesn't apply to that. Quasi criminal is basically a local or municipal law or prison or court interaction. So you don't have to focus there. Another thing I want to bring up before you just move forward with the resolution exactly as it would.
Mr. Pruitt, can you speak up a little bit as some people can't hear?
I need to turn to my secretary and get a better...
I'll holler up right away. That's all right, I can. So you did think so, as far as when you said you're appointing this special council, so your charter, and this hasn't been amended since 1955, says that the board should also appoint upon recommendation as a superintendent, teachers, principals, employees, legal counsel, etc., and such other personnel, if it may be necessary. So, you know, just like our appointment, you're gonna need a recommendation from the superintendent that you guys approve, whoever that council is. Now, another thing I was gonna mention is, and I guess this is assumed, I assume everybody, so we're talking about hiring a council at public expense as part of the school district budget, which is fine, everything I said. If anybody here wants to go out and hire your own lawyer on their own dime, you do that. That's not a problem.
Can you repeat that? What did you say about public expense? I didn't hear.
All of this we're talking about. So Red's motion would be to hire a special council, which would be an expense of the school district. It's like we're expensing the school district's general council, and that's all fine. But you would need to follow that procedure or superintendent recommends, and the board approves by majority vote. And I was just making sure people know, I'm not telling you, you can't go hire your own lawyer. That's your right as an American citizen if you want to do that on your own dime.
You mean as a board, however?
Not as a board, individually.
No, I mean, what you were saying before, as far as the special expense, that would apply to if the board hired...
If the district hires.
If the district hires, which would come at the recommendation of Dr. Means, and then follow the, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, ma'am, that's right.
Mr. Pruitt, would you repeat what you said about GSBA? Because I was unaware of that. That has happened before, not necessarily with... What's, what was my name that said, man, it was sex. But it has happened before where an attorney was appointed from GSBA, or by GSBA, to handle cases of this school board and also school boards across the state.
Would you have to get, make sure of that?
I'm sure.
If you want to go forward, we'll make sure of that before, so you can get paid for by GSBA.
Yeah, the only thing I'm saying that, you know, you pay an association $12,000 to $14,000, and then you also have a risk management department to handle these kinds of situations. Why should we, in terms of, what's...
Well, I don't want to pay for that. I mean, I don't want you using my tax dollars to pay for it if you get paid for by GSBA.
Absolutely.
But I don't know that they will. But if you say they're gonna, we'll definitely call it out.
Thank you much.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, if the board will allow me to read just a few sentences. This is what I sent to Phil Hartley yesterday. I said, "Under what conditions will GSBA represent a school?"
Wait a minute. I'm gonna call a point of order. See, that's why we're in the trouble we're in now. Why would you send something...
Let me interject. So, Mr. Davis, if you would finish, and then if there's further discussion, we can just...
I said point of order. Point of, no, 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 no. Point of order is a privileged motion. And when I say point of order, I have a privilege to speak. That's Roberts' rules of order.
If I'm not mistaken, could you correct me, Mr. Pruitt? I'm still presiding over this meeting?
So I gather Mr. Worthy's point of order is that this statement, the best I've ever, is out of order. If you rule that's not paid, it's worth appealing that to a board or a court.
Okay, I have not heard what Mr. Davis is getting ready to say, so I don't know if it's out of order. So I'm gonna overrule that and allow him to finish speaking.
Okay, on what basis you're gonna overrule that? I know Roberts' rules of order. Point of order is a privileged motion. That's the problem with this board.
And I trust that you do. I'm not saying that, Mr. Worthy, that you don't...
How can you overrule me? I'm not telling you why you overruled me.
I'm telling you why, because I haven't heard what Mr. Davis is getting ready to say.
How about I interject? Because we've seen this in our emails before.
Yes.
The fact that Mr. Davis did not have a vote of the board to approach Mr. Hartley...
That's it.
Is the point of order issue.
Okay, and if I'm understanding you correctly, Mr. Pruitt, if I heard you correctly, I determine if this is, if this particular point of order can be overruled, and then we vote as a board if, in fact, it is inappropriate or point of order.
And whichever party is, because I'm losing it in here, we're going to go to the other one.
Okay, so I'm gonna overrule the point of order. And, Mr. Worthy, if you would like to appeal it, I'm happy for us to take a vote.
I'm going to appeal it, folks.
Okay.
And I'm gonna appeal it on the basis that it is in the law that you don't act as an individual with this board. Had we voted for Mr. Davis to contact Field Hartley, then it'd be okay. We violated laws. That's why we're in trouble now. That's exactly why we're in trouble. And I am not understanding for it, folks.
But from what I understand, Mr. Davis, this is something that has already happened. Is that correct?
It's a violation.
And so us discussing it...
What I will do is I will provide this email back and forth with Phil Hartley. I will provide it to Dr. Means and Mike.
Does it change the point of order?
No, it doesn't.
Point of order?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think Mr. Worthy needs to have a second to... Mr. Worthy needs to have a second to his...
Appeal. Okay, is there a second to Mr. Worthy's appeal? Okay, and then we would need to open up for a discussion related to this?
So I think one relevant point of discussion would be to ask Mr. Davis if he represented himself as being, representing this board, that he represented himself to Mr. Hartley as being represented on this board.
May I ask me?
That was a question to Mr. Davis.
I write that he represents himself as an individual.
There again.
Thank you.
If you read the law, you can't speak for something that happened with this board individually. You can't do it, folks.
Sounds like it was...
You cannot do that.
I pose a hypothetical question.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do have just a curiosity question. As an elected official to a board of education, is someone able to call the Georgia State School Board Association as an individual? Or have you already identified yourself as a member of a body, a governing body?
When you contact...
Hypothetically, right. So if someone's a member of a body, a governing body that is serviced by GSBA, are you able then to say, "But I'm calling as an individual"? Just intellectually, I'm curious if that's even possible.
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either. I just, I pulled it for the board to, and the community to consider.
I have a related question, I guess. If you have a question about something that's related to being a school board member, wouldn't GSBA be the place that we should ask? And do we need to have? I understand in this situation, maybe it's different, but in general, if I have a question about what my roles and responsibilities are as a member of the school board, I feel like asking somebody at GSBA would be something that I could do without asking everybody on the board to...
So, Dr. Cannon, I agree with that premise. But when you have an agenda item that's going to be discussed within the week, and it's clearly an issue of interest that adds, I think it just adds another shade to the issue. But I appreciate your statement. It's a fair statement.
So I'm there with this, and all I know is this stream of emails that I've been looking at last week. And there was a huge amount of confusion, and I almost called the Georgia school board to ask a question about how this works because it's a point of information, it's a point of process. I didn't see your email to him. But I would hope that we aren't limited for information seeking just because we're on a board. I mean, otherwise, we're all working in the dark here, and that makes no sense to me.
But there, so it's interesting, and I appreciate your statement, Dr. Yeager, but...
But there, so it's interesting, and I appreciate your statement, Dr. Gager, but there are certain guardrails that are placed on board members that are not placed on individual citizens, and so I think that there's a nuance to it. Um, typically, the, the protocol is to either go under the board president, or to come to the superintendent, or, and, and you can ask those types of questions of the board leadership, or to board vice president, then we would go to legal counsel, that, that's the typical, uh, way that these types of items are.
So, that's what was happening on email, and I saw just a lot of confusion about what exactly was possible. People were talking about hiring a lawyer, people were talking about can I represent us, people were talking about, I mean, it was a lot of uncertainty sorting through, that's not really-
I, I, I don't disagree. I think Mr. Pruitt's statement that he made earlier in reference to this also being political, and not being a legal issue, also has elements to it. So, I think Mr. Pruitt did provide some counsel to us legally, in terms of the straight law, and what, what needs to happen from a legal perspective. But as he said earlier, there's also a political element to, to this issue of if the board would be satisfied with, um, our legal counsel representing the district. Not representing the office of the superintendent, or representing the board of education, but representing the district. So, he made that statement earlier, he also put it in writing, uh, I believe it was sent to the entire board and myself last week, Thursday. Um, if that was not sufficient, then, then yes, then I think other avenues could, and obviously have been explored.
Madam President, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I hear different things. I didn't say that you couldn't call GSBA. I understood, Mr. Davis said that he called Phil Hartley. A email, whatever he did, pertaining to this resolution.
That is not-
No.
What did you say then?
We can't say that, because there's been an objection.
No, right now, we have, we have on the floor, this is discussion, to appeal the point of order, and so that's where we are, so I think there, that's where we are.
Where did the resolution come from? Did you draft the video or did you?
Madam Chair, madam chair, if you-
No, right now, we're at the point of order, voting on whether to-
I don't, if discussion is concluded, then you need to vote on Mr. Worthy's opposition.
Okay, I, I would imagine, Mr. Pruitt, that would just simply be those in favor of the point of, of Mr. Worthy's point of order.
Right.
Okay, so those that are in favor of Mr. Worthy's point of, point of order, can you repeat the point of order for us, Mr. Worthy?
I said, "The point of order is a privileged motion." And I was objected to this resolution. I thought I heard Mr. Davis saying that, well, I know he said he contacted the Hartley, Phil Hartley. And that is incorrect.
Okay, and so all of those in favor of, of holding the point of order, um, if you would show, by raising your hand? Okay, and those who are, um, not in favor, if you would raise your hand? Okay, so I think that where that takes us is back at Mr. Davis, okay, Mr. Davis?
Hey, my question, um, this is what I asked Phil Hartley, who is the, um, my understanding, or the legal team of GSBA. Uh, "Under what conditions would GSBA represent a school board?" Uh, "A fellow member said it was the job of GSBA to do, to do so if an advanced ed investigation is taking place. However, I do not see that listed as a benefit of GSBA membership." Uh, "This is what, um, Mr. Hartley responded. You are correct, GSBA does not provide legal services. As you note, the GSBA Risk Management Fund, of which Clark County is a member, would provide a defense to the district or board members in the event of a covered claim. But I have never known an advanced ed investigation to constitute a legal claim covered under the membership agreement of any other insurance policy. If I can answer any other questions for the board or the district, let me know."
So, Dr. Gager? I have a question for Mr. Davis. And, and so you didn't discuss this resolution with Mr. Hartley?
No, I did not, I, what I wanted was, um, based on what my fellow board member, Mr. Worthy, has said in the past, GSBA would pick up the banner, and so before I sat down and, and began processing, you know, this resolution that we're gonna discuss next, I wanted to make sure that, that I wasn't spinning my wheels. And so I wanted to make sure that we could not count on GSBA to represent us as a board in this advanced ed, um, process.
So, you were just getting clarification on, uh, whether GSBA would provide an internal essential?
That's correct.
Okay, but nothing else?
Nothing else.
Mr. Davis?
My question is, would the answer be different if you were speaking on behalf of the board? I, I, I can't tell that, if it gives somebody something hypothetical, then there are lots of variables out there, but if you were speaking as a board spokesperson, as a representative of the board, would we have the same answer?
Okay, but the question was-
We can't answer that.
But the question was, Linda, is, "Under what condition would GSBA represent a school?"
Didn't you divulge to him the nature of the complaint and what's at stake? Is there not any possibility of us an answer to what he said about? I'm having a challenge here, because yeah, until we can speak with the authority and autonomy of the board, and seeking this advice from the people that we are paid to defend this district, should there, this come to litigation, then I don't think that we're gonna get an answer, if that is conducive to us making a decision.
But it is consistent, if I may interrupt, please, it is consistent with what our attorney said tonight. So, you know, there is consistency there, now-
Well, we're the biggest holder in that GSBA pool of mine, that carries weight. And I've heard that from GSBA themselves, when they come and talk to us about things, so I don't know that we could have influenced that outcome. I don't think we have an answer officially from GSBA, and that is my concern. We cannot hypothetically, I, I will not be a part of a hypothetical negotiation, we have got to be, this is too serious, this is way too serious for us to take shortcuts. I think we need to follow our policy, and our policy says that we make an official inquiry, but we have even part to be made of that, and that's all I have to say.
I heard that.
Uh, Mr. Worthy, Dr. Gager, and then, Mr. Davis?
Okay, and I need to speak on this again, things are being twisted, I heard. Dr. Knox asked Mr. Davis, you didn't have a discussion with him, I didn't say a discussion. I said, "An individual board member shouldn't be contacting anybody unless the board has given approval." Now, Dr. Means, did you have that orientation manual with you that I put together?
I do.
Okay, you have it before you?
I know it's there to my arms.
Okay.
You can get it?
I would like for someone to get it, we'll move on, and when they bring it back, I want you, if, I would like for Dr. Means or the attorney to read from page twenty-two. Now, that's not what Charles Worthy wrote. That's what, uh, the law said with the general assembly. Folks, we're getting deeper and deeper into this. Not me, I'm not an hypocrite, Sam, 'cause I'm not gonna violate laws. Page twenty-two, when he gets back there, or when she gets back there.
Okay. So, my question was just for Linda, um, because you were saying that you didn't, and I understand that you don't wanna go with a hypothetical answer, but I, I think Mr. Pruitt already asked them the same question.
Well, we have miscommunication over here, and Andrew thought I called, and I thought she called. We will be glad, first thing in the morning, to see if that is accurate.
I don't know, so we can hear you, sir.
Oh. Is it working, yeah? I said we have miscommunication, Andrew thought I called, and I thought she called, so we actually have. I, I, I think that what Phil said is probably right, but, uh, we will be glad to send August ninth letter, I mean, that's all I've seen writing so far, send that to GSBA in the morning, and make a formal request for coverage, we're getting all the wants to.
Mr. Hartley?
Okay?
We have page two, two, three.
Okay.
Worthy, I'll give you, I'm perusing it on, there you are.
Okay. All right, it's my page twenty-two. Uh, that's, that's advanced ed, I see, all right.
Mr. Worthy, while you look forward to it, go ahead, okay, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, I would just like to propose, um, this, this resolution that I'm introducing, and, um, have it up for discussion and vote.
A second, okay, so then, okay, so there's a motion for us to adopt this resolution, there's a second, and then, uh, Dr. Gager, and we're gonna open it up for discussion. Before we do that, can we take a few, about a minute to read it, I haven't, um, read it, so.
I will, I, I don't know if you can benefit from it, I, I will, I'm a schoolkeeper, I read out loud all the time. Oh, okay, I can go ahead and read it, okay.
Okay.
Whereas the Clark County Board of Education is the governing authority of the Clark County School District, whereas the Board of Education is charged by law with the responsibility toward the operation of the school district, whereas the school district has received notice that advanced ed has received complaints regarding the Clark County school system, whereas the notice provides that the complaints relate to, among other things, allegations, alleged acts by some identified members of, of the Board of Education that allegedly undermined the leadership of the superintendent, whereas the notice provides that the Clark County school system is required to respond to the complaints. Whereas the school district's attorney has stated, while he firmly believes that the first assumption is not true, and positively states that the second assumption is not true, there seems to have been two assumptions made about the complaints and allegations referred to in the notice that the superintendent will agree with those allegations in his response to the advanced ed, and thereby pursue an agenda that could result in loss accreditation, and two, the school district's attorney will assist him in doing so. Whereas given the complaints and the allegations that there have been made, that have been made as well as the seeming assumptions referred to by the school district's attorney, it is in the best interest of the school district that the complaints and allegations referred to in the notice will, will be investigated by a person that, and has the appearance of being neutral, objective, unbiased, independent of the Board of Education, any member of the Board of Education, the superintendent, and the school district's attorney. Whereas given the complaints and allegations that have been made, as well as the seeming assumptions referred to by the school district's attorney, it is best, it is in the best interest of the school district that the school district responds to the complaints and allegations referred to in the notice, be prepared by a person that is, and has the appearance of being neutral, objective, unbiased, independent of the Board of Education, any member of the Board of Education, the superintendent, and the superintendent's legal counsel. And whereas it is in the best interest of the school district that the person that investigates and prepares, prepares a response to the complaints and allegations referred to in the notice be a member in good standing of the Georgia Bar, the, the State Bar of Georgia. It is therefore resolved that the Board of Education shall retain a member in good standing of the State Bar of Georgia to investigate and prepare a response to the complaints and allegations referred to in the notice on behalf of the school district. Special legal counsel shall be selected by a special committee consisting of members of the Board of Education that will be appointed by the president of the Board of Education. Subject to the approval of the Board of Education, the terms and conditions of special legal counsel's relationship with the school district, including compensation, shall be set by the president of the Board of Education. It is further resolved that each member of the Board of Education will fully cooperate with and assist special legal counsel in the performance of his or her duties. Additionally, the superintendent and the members of his staff are hereby directed to fully cooperate with and assist special legal counsel in the performance of his or her duties.
Okay, and do you mind giving, giving me about two minutes? I just, I need to digest this, so I can figure out what my, my questions are.
Madam, madam chair, may, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
May I suggest a ten-minute recess?
I'm sorry, what is it?
A ten-minute recess to allow, to allow the board members to read this, um, ad with, and at your pace, make your notes, and then reconvene.
Sure.
We're also making copies, we had some copies for the public, wanted to make sure our three media outlets had, um, copies, but we're making more copies for people that are tense.
Okay.
May I read what I requested before we take that ten minutes break?
It's a paper here.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna start out. The role of Board of Education members. Board members are state officials. They are empowered by the state law to perform a state function, governing public studies at the local level, their power derived from the state legislature, not from the people of the community. They are representatives of the community, uh, to the state. Now, this is where the rubber meets the highway. Board members have no legal status other than that of any citizen, except when they are seated, uh, with other board members in a legal constituted meeting, like we are not. As individuals, board members cannot make decisions for the board, take action for the board, or speak for the board unless the board has authorized them to do so. That's it all, folks.
Thank you. Uh, it is five fifty, we'll take a ten-minute recess, and we'll begin back at six. Okay, thank you. Did we already have a motion on the floor, did someone already?
Yes.
We have a second. Okay, and we were opening it up for discussion, okay, so the floor is open for discussion. The resolution, it was a-
Oh, I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Davis?
Where, where did the resolution come from?
I, I, I read it, I didn't know.
Did you crack this resolution for us?
In part.
In part, so we have to help, we're in this together.
I got my wife proofreading.
My question is this-
What difference does it make?
What, what's the difference?
I did not break board policy in the creation of it, so, Sylvia?
Well, again, I don't, I don't understand, I mean, again, I, I think, all these things, but I'm wondering how we got the resolution when we haven't even had an RFP, to even hire somebody to draft a resolution, or even to look at representing us? So, it seems a bit premature to me, that's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Davis, Dr. Knox?
I would just respond to that by saying that board members should be fully within their power to draft their own resolutions, they don't have to do an RFP to bring in somebody to write a resolution. That's what elected officials generally do.
And if I can respond, be-
Okay, thank you, Dr. Knox, Ms. Davis?
When we are going to hire somebody, the process, since we don't know the cost, right? It's gonna be more than we can authorize period by individual wars, but we have an RFP process that I think you want to insist on using on other things, when we're gonna hire an attorney, I would expect us to go through an RFP process, as our policies tell us that we do things, our purchasing policies say that, right?
But not, but not to write the resolution, which is what's-
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't understand you.
Okay, go ahead and finish, Ms. Davis?
Okay, so, again, I, I would think that before we come up with a resolution, we would probably just leave a vote, as well, on hiring attorneys, and we will come up with our requirements for the RFP, and the RFP process goes with administration.
Uh, Dr. Gager?
Point of clarification, and then, Dr. Maddox? Ms. Davis, it seems like this is asking, this is the request here, this resolution is the request that you're saying we need to vote on, am I misunderstanding what you're saying?
I just, I don't understand why it needs to be a resolution, why isn't it just a vote of the board? Why is it a motion and a vote?
It's just an extended motion.
Yes.
That's all, that's all I'm saying, if that's, if that's how we're gonna do things going forward, then I'll be better prepared as a board member, to present my-
Okay, thank you, Dr. Maddox?
My concern has been that we have thirty days, and we do not have a lot of information. We were not given a lot of direction, you know, there were a lot of back and forth, I asked specific questions, should we have a lawyer? Should we have a lawyer? Should we have an attorney? And so, we have to do what we need to do to make sure that we're doing the best for this district. So I don't understand about the back and forth about individual persons bringing to the table what they feel is gonna help this district.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Maddox, Dr. Meads?
Sure. I appreciate the resolution. Just a few items that I think the board should consider before you both upon this. First, I think it's in that area where it says it is therefore resolved that, and it says the Board of Education shall retain a member in good standing of the State Bar of Georgia to investigate and prepare a response to complaints and allegations. The Advanced Ed letter clearly stated that the Office of the Superintendent will respond to the allegations, so there is no space for the board to respond to the complaints. Now, you, the board can prepare a response to the response, but that's not within the purview of the Board of Education. That's number one.
Dr. Meads, can you say where that is in the...
It's in the letter.
No, it just says the Clark County school system is required to respond.
No. Right there. No, and I'll pull it up, the letter. Yes. It's the first full paragraph on page two.
Yeah, on the front page, it says that, it says that a response, a written response from you, and then on the back of the letter, you know, on page two, it states that the Clark County school system is required to respond to the complaint. And I was trying to find the email where, you know, Dr. Meads had gotten some feedback from the person at Advanced Ed. And in that email, I do recall that it stated that the school system should come up with their process of how that answer would take place. You know, and the response from, you know, Dr. Meads to us is that, you know, as he just stated, that he was gonna get with his staff and legal counsel to draft that, that response, which is my personal concern, is that why not the team of ten sit down and discuss that, that concern? And I just personally do not believe that the superintendent can be objective in this situation with all that is going on, as we've heard in the word, and it's political, it's very political. And so, that's, that's my major concern, is that this letter itself is kinda contradictory because on one side it does say we want a response from you, and then on the backside it states that the Clark County school system is required to respond to the complaint.
Reclaiming my time. Um, when you look at the first paragraph, second sentence, it says this letter is to notify you, is addressed to Dr. Meads, Superintendent. This letter is to notify you of the complaints and request, and to request a written response from you. So that's in the first paragraph, second sentence. And so, I think, so candidly, the fact that we're even having a discussion on who is to respond to the complaint emphasizes the, the division on, there is no team of ten here right now. It was a concept that I, the concept of a team of ten is something that I brought to the district, hoping that there would be a team of ten. That has not been the case. And so, yeah, I agree as well. And so, the fact that we're at this point, the letter, you referenced, Dr. Maddox, the counsel that was provided to, to me, I asked a question, who's charged with drafting a response to the Advanced Ed letter dated August ninth? Ms. Carter, who works for, she's a senior vice president of Accreditation Services for Advanced Ed, said the written response must be representative of the Office of the Superintendent of the Clark County School District. It is a local district decision as to the process for determining and writing the information that will comprise the response. Since the response has to come from the Office of the Superintendent, I have decided that the process will be the process that I will work with my staff to develop the response. So that the response has been provided. You may not like it, but that is the response that I plan to submit to Advanced Ed. There is no purview for the Board of Education to provide a response to this complaint.
Okay, and if I can, it's hard for me to switch all of my screens, so maybe someone here can remind me. I think, maybe, Mr. Pruitt, you can tell me I'm out of order here. But I think one of your, in one of our conversations, there, you spoke of the possibility, not necessarily of working directly together, but certainly in an ideal world, this would be something that, that we could discuss.
Absolutely. And I do plan to provide a draft response and share the draft response with the board at the September twelfth board meeting. And I count the working days, I believe I have until September thirteenth to submit. So there's thirteen working days that I'm counting from the date of August ninth that needs to, to, I need to have this submitted by. And so, if I count the working days, there, the final day to submit this is Friday, September thirteenth. That's my plan to share my draft and discuss the draft with the board at the September twelfth board meeting.
Okay. And so, that would be more of a discussion, but because it'll be the day before it's due, it's more so like a notification of this is what?
I hope that's not, that's not the case. I hope that there's space for, for discussion. I wanna offer the board as much due process as appropriate, but ultimately, the, it's very clear, the response must be representative of the Office of the Superintendent. And so, immediately, there has been a question from the board in relation to what's our role in responding to this complaint. There is no space for the board. You can respond to the response, but there is no place for the board to, to indicate that they're going to provide a response to a complaint against yourself.
Okay. Unless determined, unless you determine that that was a part of the process. Is that correct?
So, she writes in the second line, it is, it is a local, local district decision as to the process for determining and writing the information that will comprise the response. To, to echo Dr. Maddox's statement, the relationship is so divided at this point, I don't see an opportunity for us to collaborate. There have been, there hasn't been a lot of space for collaboration, and that's, I candidly, I think that's one of the reasons why we're in the position we're in.
Thank you. Dr. Knox, and then Dr. Maddox?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did have one other statement.
Okay.
So reclaiming my time. I also want the board to be very aware of the fact that I have no intention or plan to make a recommendation for retaining legal counsel for this resolution. So even if you pass the resolution tonight, I have, I have no intention of bringing forth a recommendation that would allow the board to hire an attorney in any way.
Okay.
So you could pass this resolution. It won't allow you to accomplish what you are seeking to do in the resolution.
And so, what I hear you saying is that even if the resolution passes, I think from what Mr. Pruitt said earlier, that recommendation would have to come from you, and you're not providing that recommendation.
I have no place to make that recommendation.
Thank you. Dr. Knox?
Yes.
Dr. Maddox, and then Mr. Worthing.
I just have a question for Dr. Meads about the, any possible response to the response, since he's had contact with Advanced Ed. If the board makes a response to, to the Office of the Superintendent's response, what, what would happen? Do you have any idea? Is that something that would go to Advanced Ed? Is that something that would simply vaporize, go into the wastebaskets? Do you have any insight from Advanced Ed?
I have no insight.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Maddox, and then Mr. Worthing.
I guess as the board, I'm a way to understand from, from Mr. Pruitt. Okay, where are we as part of, being a part of the school district? Like, I guess the lady, even, even with this being written up, the written response must be representative of the Office of the Superintendent. I get that. It is a local district decision as to the process for determining and writing the information that will comprise response. So where is the board in that? If we are, we are a part of the district, or not part of the district, okay? So we are a part of the district, but...
I'm sorry, what did, what did Mr. Pruitt say?
He said, yes, we are.
The board is a part of the district.
Of course.
Okay?
So, so back to Rule 111, we have a back of Mike's, or everybody represent a Florida county school, which is a government district. So, Rule 111, Rule 113, State Bar Rule, which is Mike's, or it's not representative of the organization, which is the organization, which clarifies constituents, which in that sense means the ten peoples, the ten people sitting up there govern the school district.
Okay.
So, so, Madam Chair, if there is any attempt by the Board of Education to submit a response, I will make sure that I notify Advanced Ed that it is not representative of the Office of the Superintendent.
Okay.
That's my point. So the board can, the board can continue to forge on and ignore what I'm sharing with you, what I've shared and written. That's my point. That's what I intend to do. If there's an attempt by the board to submit a response to the complaint from Advanced Ed, I would be obligated, and I will clearly state that that response is not representative of, of the Office of the Superintendent, and it will just reinforce the components within the complaint.
Thank you. Mr. Worthing, then, Dr. Dyke.
Yes, I, I, I wanna make a couple of comments here because I've been through this before. And I'll say this, yes, I've been through this before. Okay, hot and heavy. And, Ms. Davis, let me make one correction to our resolution here, says Advanced Ed slash SASS, federal SASS, okay? It's strictly Advanced Ed.
How do we, how do we, how do we...
But anyway, what I wanna say is this, is I, I think it's extremely important because when it was SASS, that's what I read Pruitt several years ago on a complaint, it's filed by the Superintendent, but what I wanna say to you all, serious business here, with Advanced Ed, they have put a new span on it, okay? When I said a new span, you have an office where I tickle Arizona. Now, having said that, let me say this, and I don't know whether some of you ought to pay attention to the letter that was penned or crafted. It wasn't crafted by the name that Dr. Meads gave us, which was Dr. Claudia Carter. That letter was crafted by an attorney. You might look at it, an attorney, and then voted. I have read that letter over and over and over. And I feel that letter was crafted very particular, very particularly, with some of the things that we're sitting here going through tonight, I tell you, it's scary to me. It really is, because I don't think we should be doing it. I, I, I really don't think we need to be doing too much discussing the complaints, discussing what this board has been charged with. You need to wait and see what's going to happen. Serious business. Now, go back and read that letter, and go back and read hard where the last section in the rotation manual that I gave each of you, that gave Dr. Gager a copy of that tonight. Advanced Ed is in there, standard two, ours, governance, and it's also in that letter. What this board has been charged with is dangerous, folks, okay? And I think the board, we talk about something that you don't know what's going to happen, and you don't know what you're doing.
I have any thought about writing my own response, so, I mean, I feel like there are a lot of assumptions that are being made by all of us, and it comes from the fact that we don't have very much information. So I thought this meeting today was gonna be to talk about some of that and to get out in the open what the, maybe not the exact complaints, but what the nature of the complaints were and, and what is considered something that might be over the line or below the line or whatever it is, and, and so that we could talk about those things, so that we could be clear on, on what it is and how, I know we all, not all of us, but some of us have one way of thinking about what our role is, and others might feel like their role is something else, and so I really thought what we were doing today was talking about this so that we could possibly get a handle on it, and there wouldn't be so many assumptions. Because right now, I don't have any idea whether we might need legal counsel or not. So I, I don't know whether we need it or not because I don't know what will happen after Dr. Meads sends his response, because I don't know what the response will be. I don't know whether that means Advanced Ed will come, they won't come. I don't know if we'll need legal counsel. I don't know if Mr. Pruitt can be the legal counsel. It sounds like we can't get our own legal counsel. So I really don't know. I, I don't know. And so I felt like what we were doing today was trying to get some of that information, but it doesn't sound like we are. So it's not like that.
Thank you. Dr. Dyke, and then Mr. Davis, and then I have that, please. I have a comment.
I just wanna point out a couple of things. One is that when the complaint came down from Advanced Ed, our attorney said that the charges were very vague, and what I was hoping to see as a response, either from our attorney or the superintendent in this case, clarification. Because I don't see how you can make a response without knowing the details of what the alleged complaint says. And for those, and I think it's fairly public now, in the press release and that type of thing. So, I don't know if, if I was in Dr. Meads' shoes, I'm not sure what I'm responding to. And it was so confusing that, that legal counsel, that our attorney said, if you got something, bring it to this meeting. I mean, it's kinda like, I don't know what we're doing here, but if you got something, as a board member, bring it. So, I feel like that in terms of the process, what I was waiting for, and I'm addressing this to you, Dr. Meads specifically, is that I was, I was waiting for you to write back to Advanced Ed and say, what in the heck are you talking about? I need details. And so, then, then the next thing I read is, is I read that you're gonna make a response, which on something that I'm not sure what you're responding to, but, because it's very vague, as the attorney said, but you're gonna, you're writing a response based on working with your cabinet officials and legal counsel. When our school board counsel has already said he's out of it, so I'm saying, that's why I, and I did not want to interfere with your client, or your confidentiality, but that's why I started off by asking you what legal advice were you getting, because Mike says he's out of it. So, but like I said, it's, it's not my business, and that's not what we're discussing. But that, I just wanted you to know that I just wasn't being nosy. I was, I was trying to see, because I feel like that as, as, and then one last thing, our, Mr. Pruitt did write, a situation, did write, and I don't know, I'm not gonna read this verbatim, but he did insinuate very clearly that we may have a point, a common response, you know? Says words to the effect that we could have a unified response, or we may not. Now, if we don't have a unified response, that to me implies that there may be multiple responses. But in no way do, do, do I, you know, I know that you are only within your rights to make the response from your office. I just, I just strongly believe that, that we as a board, and again, this is based on majority vote, it's not one person going outside and doing it, it's the vote of the board for, for us. for, for us to, um, have our own, uh, representation. Because the first thing I want to know before anybody talks to me is, what is this about? But anyway, somebody who was independent and totally has no connection to, to anyone in this room. And I, I don't, that's the first time that I've heard that a resolution could be passed by this board and that, and that, and that superintendent could ignore it. So, you know, I guess, you know, that's one sense that I guess there's, that still need to have a lot to learn. But anyway, I'm just, I'm disappointed that, that you, that you had that response. And, um, so I'm not, I'm not sure how to proceed after that, except I, I'm, I want to resurrect, I'm not resurrect, I want to compress on with my, with my, um, resolution and I'm submitting it against the board vote and up or down.
Okay. And can I ask for, uh, just point of clarity, and then I've had a few comments I want to make. In this first full paragraph, where, um, it says, whereas the school district's attorney has stated that while he firmly believes that the first assumption goes on to talk about second assumption, can you clarify what, uh, what?
Then, you know, when, when, when this was being crafted, I had to be careful about how, I mean, this is stuff that, that is coming from my attorney. But I, I, you know, I didn't, I don't want him cited, so forevermore, his, he, when you go Google, his name is out there. So, but it came, it came to my attorney in this letter to the board.
Are you, are you referring to the, the claims in the, in the Advance Letter 1, 2, 3?
No.
No. Okay, yeah, I was just asking what is the second assumption and what is the first assumption? Gotcha, okay. Dr. Norris?
If, if I may make some minor edits here, just for clarification on that.
Okay.
So in line two, there's a missing parenthesis before the word the, for parenthesis, the school district. In line five, Advance Ed, it was spelled, it's A D H A V A then C then E D. I will point out, there was discussion about that earlier. This resolution has exactly the same name of the organization that was in the August ninth, two thousand nineteen letter to Dr. Means from Advance Ed. So I think Advance slash SASI is appropriate. And then finally, um, in the paragraph that we're talking about right now, I would propose that to make clarity for what we were just asking about, where it says the first assumption, that should be the first assumption below, and then the second assumption below. So it's clear that those are referencing numbers one and two in that paragraph. And Advance Ed has also got an extra E in those edits.
And, and, but if I'm understanding correctly, number two, well, I guess it's an assumption, right? But we've heard clarity on that. Is, is it?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know that until tonight.
Okay. Um, I, I just wanted, uh, Ms. Davis, Ms. Davis, well, I just wanted to make a couple of comments and then, um, I wanted to give some context for just where I am right now. I am, um, I, I am very saddened, actually, that we, we are at this place. I've heard, uh, some perspective shared and wanted to just be sure that mine was in that sense, we're discussing the resolution and the Advance Ed. Um, the first point I'll make is that I, I just think this has gone too far. Um, I think we are at a place in our county, maybe even in our nation, but certainly as it relates to education matters, where we are trying to fix relational problems with, with formalities. Okay? And that never ends well. That is not nothing, but it just does not take the place of being able to sit across from someone and hold them accountable and to be transparent, to extend some compassion, but challenge them. And I, you, I, I'm, I'm almost where, uh, Dr. Dyckman is. I'm, I'm not at the place. I've committed that I won't, I, I'm not going to be reactionary. I have a healthy respect for, um, for Advance Ed and the implications of everything. But I won't, I won't govern in fear and I certainly won't govern, um, with a reactionary approach. And so while, of course, this, this complaint, it does worry me, I think it worries many of us. I'm not at the place, I, I, there's still so much I don't know that I'm not feeling, I don't think tonight I'm at a place of adopting a resolution that I'm seeing right now, um, for the first time, that could have technically been captured in our discussion tonight. Um, and, and so I'm just, it, it concerns me because it's one more formality. Seeking counsel does not concern me. So let me, let me, let me be very clear about that. Um, and I think I've shared that with Dr. Means, uh, uh, that's no secret. Uh, that piece, um, I'm clear about. But I just think how we're going about doing things, we have, we are losing sight of children. And I, I, I don't, I don't pretend to be innocent in this, so let me just say that first. But, you know, when I hear terms like collaborate and we don't collaborate, we don't collaborate because as adults, we've chosen not to. And that is the bottom line. We are all at a place, and this is not to invalidate anybody's experience. It certainly is not to minimize it, but at some point as a board, we have to move with those injuries. We can't allow this to take up all of our energy. And right now, we are in a place where we're putting out fires. And that's not fair to kids. It's not fair to parents and communities that, that are not represented here because they don't have the luxury of being here. And I'm just, I'm at the place where I, I can't in good conscience go towards things that in, in my interpretation, it is just another attempt. You know, it's another, you know, and, and I think, and I don't want to single this out, Mr. Davis, because I'm, I'm more so talking, talking about this, I'm talking, we're talking about the Advance Ed complaint. And we're using like the power that we have in formal processes again to try to fix something that we're going to have to commit to fixing. And I, and, and I believe in doing that in a transparent way. And I think that goes for all ten of us, is it ten of us at the table? And, and I just, I'm, I'm, I certainly support counsel, but I can't, I can't, I, I won't support ongoing processes regardless of where they come from. And I, and I think there's a number of them right now, I just, I can't support that. And so I want to encourage us as we reflect, regardless of how this moves forward, I always respect the decision of the board. But I really want to encourage us to be introspective about what we're bringing to this process, what we're bringing that's harming, in, in essence, an organization that is meant to educate children, that is meant to create positive and healthy experiences for children. And that is just going to require some shifting on our parts. And right now, we are sort of digging down and deciding to handle things, um, in a, in, in my, my opinion, a less than human way. And I, I, I'm not, I'm not there, so. Ms. Davis, and then Dr. Norris.
And I don't want to go overboard. Thank you for that encouragement and that position. I simply wanted to say, as we look at, what is it that we're really wrong? None of us can't really be able to make a decision. That's against state law. So if this resolution was to work and fight collaboration, then that's, that's wrong. And so we, we have to really, I, I, it causes me, because I'm not a part of the conversation either, it causes me to wonder, why are we putting so much energy into fighting this one thing that we don't even know what it is yet? And, and so, uh, uh, Reverend Bowles is in the audience, we have a conversation about this and I'll share that conversation, because what's going on here? And I said, it's either nothing or it's everything and it's nothing. And I'll state, this is everything that we need to do to work together to fix what we have broken here in terms of moving forward. And then it becomes nothing, other than a process and plan, you know? Something that we can actually execute, where we can actually respect the superintendent, give him the space that he needs to run the district, be supportive of that work, do the work around developing a strategic plan that helps us get back to many of our kids. And so I hope we can go make short work of this and that we can move on. Yeah, you have a thing standing out there, but I hope we can make short work of it so that we can get to a place that we can move on.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, Dr. Norris, and then Dr. Mannis.
I just wanted to, to loop back, uh, to our counsel from the very beginning because we're still discussing the resolution. We're still in that place. And so, uh, Mr. Pruitt, uh, when we, when this verse was discussed at the very, very beginning, you said that this was exactly what you would propose. Do you think that was the right reading?
Yes, sir. I mean, this is the operation of detail and it was all a paragraph.
Right.
But, but we, we came here to propose when you were speaking, you were looking at the Advance Ed.
And, and who is we?
Andrew.
Okay, so, so the legal firm of Paul Booth Smith?
Yes.
Okay. So that, that was your legal advice to do essentially this with? Good, thank you.
Dr. Mannis.
No, again, I want to say I agree with most of what you said. I'm, I'm very sad. I mean, I'm, I'm hurt. I agree with the resolution because I feel like we're at a place that we need to do something. And unfortunately, we can't just really sit here and be the trial and the jury right now. But there are just a lot of things going on in this community that are just not right. And we talk about public, you know, that this is real political. But yeah, we do need to take a look at, look, look at ourselves because even myself, I'm getting to hate some of the things that I'm beginning to think about people in this community that I really respected, you know, a long time ago. And the impact that some of these, some of the things that are going on, whether it's through Facebook, whether it's through secret meetings, including some people on the board. But we don't want to be honest about a whole lot of things and really call things out because we might get so scared. And it's, it's, it's really sad. This is not the community that I grew up in. And unfortunately, we are a good board. Although our superintendent has called us a low functioning board, we are a high functioning board. And I hate the fact that, you know, we've taken on this victim role, whether the board is a victim or whether in times the superintendent is a victim. But this complaint, it, it has gone, that's gone too far. First thing that I'm concerned about is the fact that the superintendent has been very clear that he does not feel comfortable with this board. He's saying it, so we know this, okay? And I don't feel comfortable with him, but I'm willing to work with anybody who's going to do the work for the children in this district. But I'm going to hold you accountable, I'm going to ask questions and I'm not going to stop because it's about the children in this district. And there are a lot of things that I don't even repeat. There are a lot of things that I don't even share because of the fact that I know that things will blow up. Because I respect the children and the parents in this district, and that's why I'm on this board. But a complaint against the superintendent, that was wrong. Now, the complaint against us, so what, a lot of these are from the outside coming in and it's disrupting, we can't do our work. So I asked the public to stop. We can't work like this. We have not asked anything unreasonable. If the superintendent has brought something to us, it's our place to say, how much? Where is it going to be paid from? Where is the plan for sustainability? That's our job. But there are other people in the community who want to shame us, who want to set us, why do you have to, you always question everything the superintendent do? You're not supporting superintendent. The last superintendent wasn't questioned like that. The white superintendent versus the black superintendent. So I don't know whether we can just have a place, we can just talk real about some of this stuff, but it has nothing to do with these children. And this complaint, I just don't feel comfortable. First of all, I'm confused about where the board stand versus the superintendent because it seems like we report to the superintendent rather than the superintendent report to us. It says on here that this complaint should be, um, I mean, the letter said that it should be, um, the process should be developed by the school district. And we just asked the, the, um, attorney, who is the school district? The board is a part of the school district. And I really had hope from the last meeting that we, that we would start anew and have, and start working with a better relationship. But it hurt me when I got the, when we saw the response back to the fact that pretty much, I'm going to respond, I'll let you know when it's done and we'll see what happens. So we need to, um, on all ends, but we need to start calling space, space. If I'm doing wrong, call me out. But we need to get to a place where we stop some of this. I'm talking about the resolution and I'm talking about this complaint and why I feel like it's not fair. It's not going to be objective for the superintendent to complete that on his own because first of all, what are we responding to? It says on here, select board of education members. Who? It has no names. So who are, who are we responding to? What would this response be? Well, we don't even know who the response is about.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
The, the, was, was that?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Mannis, Dr. Worthing.
I think, I think Dr. Mannis's, uh, statements go to what Mr. Davis also shared. I have clarity around what the Advance Ed is seeking from the office of the superintendent. I think some of the statements that have been made here are very, I agree with it. It's, it's sad that we're in this place. I'm not innocent either. I think the, the response from community members, how, I think people with certain privilege feel they can speak to me a certain way has hardened who I am. And I haven't been who I am, um, because of the treatment, because of the, the snide stares and laughing and all those different things. It's impacted me and it's impacted me in a way where I'm not the person who I want to be or I can be for the school system because of the treatment. And I, I've allowed that to, to enter into how I work with this board and the community. And so that's, I'm continuing to reflect on my being. And it's hard when you have microaggressions constantly from people of privilege who feel that they can speak to me any way they want to. Um, but I, I, that is the challenge and the role that my forefathers have traveled and I, I need to learn not to allow that to impact the work we have to do for children. But it has, and I, I will admit, admit it. But I just want to be clear with this board. This complaint that was addressed to me, not the Board of Education, not the Clark County School District, but to demand means. I have clarity around what Advance Ed is seeking. I have examples of what has been sought and I'm compiling all of it. I think Dr. Dyckman asked a good question, so what does this mean? What it means is that after I submit a response, Advance Ed will have to look at the response and decide, do they need to send a review team here to work with our, our board in the office of the superintendent? I, I have to make a decision in the response if I'm going to request that a review team come. And, and, and so let's just be candid. I think this meeting tonight is, is evident as to why there needs to be some type of intervention at some line. So when I arrived to this meeting tonight, I was hoping to have that conversation as well. So what does this mean? What, how will I compile the response? But to arrive at my place tonight and to have a resolution that is adversarial, uh, in nature, is, continues, it, it's just, candidly, it's just another example of what was highlighted for the, so I have clarity. That what's happened here this evening is just another example of what Advance- What's happened here this evening is just another example of what advanced, the, the complainants who submitted something to Advance Ed cited, and Advance Ed is asking me to affirm. So just a couple, I, I wanted to take, I appreciate everyone being candid and vulnerable and sharing their perspective. I could have, and I, I want to be on record again, because I'm not perfect, and I have not handled the journey in this community as well as I wanted to. But at the same time, it, and I don't care what skin complexion you are, what religion you are, I would hope that people can step back and say, the, the reaction from the media, from people on social media, from everywhere, hasn't been fair. And, and, and so, all I'm asking for is an opportunity to work for the children. But this, this Advance Ed conversation, or I appreciate the questions, when they're healthy questions, but some, we are collectively as a, as a leadership team, we are consumed with some, I, I, I may have used low functioning, I've also used the word dysfunctional. And so let's just be can, I, I'll, I'll be candid. I've, I've used the terminology that the board has been dysfunctional. And, and I, I've been in the superintendency for over a decade. I've worked with many board members. I enjoy a healthy debate. I call it healthy debates. But there, there seems to be a, a, yes, I do. But, but.
Okay.
It's just, after, again, I'll conclude by saying, the environment's just been, the, the environment has not been conducive for my team and I to do the work that I know you want us to do and the community wants us to do.
And let me, thank you. Let me just state, I think Mr. Worthy had commented, and then Dr. Knox. Attacks, verbal attacks from the audience or from each other won't, won't be tolerated. Okay, and so I'm very happy to just stop the meeting and pause it any time that occurs, because, because we are not gonna, that's not how we're going to continue laced under, while I'm governing tonight in this particular role. Mr. Worthy, Dr. Knox, and then Dr. Gager.
Yes, I just wanted to make a brief statement about who we are in terms of the school district. Yes, we're part of this school district as a governing body. We are not employees of this school district. Let me say that again. Sometimes people get that mixed up, board members have got that mixed up. We are not employees of this school district, we are the governing body, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy, Dr. Knox, and then Dr. Gager.
So I'd just like to return to the resolution at hand. And so with clarity that it was our own legal firm that said that they wanted to see something very similar to this brought up, I would just, I would want to move the question and vote on the resolution.
Okay. Okay, you're withdrawing. Okay, all right. Those that are in favor of the resolution that has been put forth by Mr. Davis, because we had a motion, we had a second, we discussed it, if you would.
With edits, with the small edits that I can.
Okay, with those small edits, if you would, raise your hand. And those who are opposed, if you would raise your hand. So that motion carried, okay, I just want to be sure. All right. Okay, and so if I'm understanding the process correctly, sorry. If I'm understanding the process correctly, what that means is that this motion is carried, but ultimately, the process that Mr. Pruitt has stated according to our policy is that Dr. Means would be the person to first agree or, or not, and then if so, he would be, he would still have to approve the council. Is that correct?
Right. Superintendent and Reverend in the board approves this. And the resolution has a committee, which I was thinking, I mean, there could still be a place for that, committee to vet candidates and then make recommendations in certain, to, to, to. Of course, the superintendent has announced tonight that he does a technical evaluation, too. I don't know where that's going, but it can attach to the resolution, and we'll figure it out here.
Okay. Dr. Knox?
Just for clarity for anyone that's watching, could you say what the vote was? The, the total of the vote?
I think it was five for, right? Five that were for the resolution as it stands here, and four that were opposed to the resolution. All right, we are, looks like we're at the place of adjournment, is there a motion?
There's a motion to adjourn.
Okay, is there a second? All right, I'm guessing that's not for discussion, all in favor? Okay, have a good night.